The Board of Fire Commissioners is in session. Let's have a, oh, Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Bob, no, Mayor Bob.
Which had over heart rate, a pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call for the Board of Fire Commissioners, please.
Commissioner Larkin.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Brederen.
Here.
Commissioner Jung.
Present.
Commissioner Humke is absent. You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor Koschel.
City of Reno.
Absent, Guston.
Here.
Zadra, absent, Farazin.
Here.
George.
Here.
Kayasi.
Here.
Koschel. Here. We have a quorum.
Mayor Martini.
City of Sparks, we have Councilman Lawson, Councilman Smith, and myself. We do not have a quorum and will not have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Martini. Madam Clerk, public comment? Do we have any public comment?
You do, Mr. Chairman.
Please call the public comment.
Your first speaker is James Cazara, followed by Jeff Church.
Well, my name is James Cazara. I'm a Reno resident. I'd like to have all of you work to get the state to make it taxes on eBay items or computer things, because every year their sales goes up every year, and every year you are losing sales tax for the county, the city, and the state, because you aren't collecting sales tax on these eBay or computer sales. I just did one here for $131 and no sales tax. And I have another one coming in later this week for $117, no sales tax. I am an artist, and I do buy some of my art supplies out of the area, but the company I deal with has a store in Las Vegas, so on those orders I do pay sales tax. But if you don't own a store in the state of Nevada, you don't pay no sales tax. And I'd like to see that changed, because the counties and cities are all hurting for money, along with the state, and they should have collect sales tax on all of these goods. And around the holidays, all of the different companies say how much more their Internet sales have skyrocketed every year for years. And it needs all the counties and cities to get together and let the folks in Carson City know that you want that change. Thank you.
Jeff Church, followed by Sam Deney.
For the record, my name is Jeffrey Church. I do own property both in Washoe County, unincorporated, and in the city of Reno. For a long time now, the media has been reporting that the city of Reno received a $13 million grant for fire services, a FEMA grant. I believe that's incorrect, and I did cut and paste parts of the grant application that was given to me. I believe it's an accurate representation, and I did distribute that to the members present. I do have a few extra copies if anybody wants it, and I also gave it to the Honorable Judge Cadlec, your legal advisor. The grant, and I want to quote from it, organization name, quote, "Reno Fire Department-Trucky Meadows Fire Protection District." Question, what kind of organization do you represent? Answer, city-county. Square miles of your due first response area, 6,000. Now, if you check, that's approximately the size of Washoe County minus Sparks. What percent of your response area is protected by hydrants? 9%. Reno, if you were doing a grant for Reno, would obviously be higher. And here's a great one. What is the permanent resident population, blah, 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 of your jurisdiction? 325,000. Well, the population of Reno, last I checked, is 225,000. So again, I think this grant has been referring to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and the city of Reno. How many stations in your organization? 32. Now, I have that grant. I can email it to anybody that wants it, the entire thing in its entirety, and again, I distributed copies, and I have a few extra. So what's my point? Number one, is it fraud for Reno to continue to receive this grant? Does Reno share the grant with Washoe County Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District? And in my opinion, if this is true, they should share the grant. Matter of fact, if you go by the square miles, it would seem like Truckee Meadows would get 80% of that grant. So these are questions that really need to be resolved. We have a number of very esteemed legal advisors here. There's no reason you couldn't ask them today for their opinion on what's going on with this grant, who the grant was intended for, and maybe perhaps we need to go back to FEMA and ask FEMA for an explanation. But I think it would be wrong to continue to receive this solely for the city of Reno. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Sir, could I ask you a question before you go back?
Yes, sir.
Under that grant, how many people did they apply for?
That I don't recall.
You read the grant?
Yes, sir, I did.
Was it 24 people?
I have no idea. It's many pages.
That's when we were still together, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
That's when the Truckee Meadows Fire Department and the Reno Fire Department were still together, and we requested something like 24 people.
That's a good question, and actually, the answer is-
You give the information, why don't you give the facts?
Okay, there's two answers to that. First of all, there's two grants. The one grant is for $2 million, and that runs through the end of July of 2013, so that grant is still in force. The new grant, as I understand it, was signed approximately June of 2012, and at that point, the city of Reno had already been put on notice by the county that they were going to dissolve the relationship. Therefore, in my opinion, it was morally wrong.
I think that's when we went back to Washington and got a bigger grant to take care of it. You should read both grants, sir.
I did.
You didn't, but you can't answer me.
I stand by what I said, sir.
Well, thank you.
Sam Deney, followed by Tom Motherway.
Sam Deney, the extemporaneously syncopated encyclopedia of Reno government. I am an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation. Sam Deney is the victim of the most stolen votes in the history of Nevada. Sam has attended virtually every city council meeting since 1994. And last week, Sam was Mr. Nice Guy over at Reno City Council, mostly. I'm not going to repeat Mr. Nice Guy today. You can watch it on YouTube. Just look up Sam Deney, Mr. Nice Guy, and Bob Koschel cameo. You know, I get a lot of hardship. It seems like I can't win for losing. I come down here to try to defend the fire department, the best one in all of America, and some of the firefighters don't think I'm being very nice, because they think I don't want the new fire department to be successful. That could not be further from the truth. I have defended the fire department as the best fire department in all of America. And that being said, I will continue to support both of these fire departments. The most important part of this whole issue about the fire department is the fact that the media will refuse to admit and report that it is a big old bait and switch game. At the very most, we might have $2 to $3 million involved here, back and forth, who's wasting money and who isn't. What about the $30 million wasted on the Ballardini Ranch fiasco? Why don't they write about that? Why don't they write about the $30 million wasted buying a perfectly, buying a city council meeting building that was not needed, when we had a perfectly good city council meeting building sitting dormant for five years? What about the train trench? You forget the fact that the citizens voted against the train trench, and you did it anyway, and now, if it wasn't for the banks, if it wasn't for the banks giving you all these special breaks, Reno and Washoe would be bankrupt, because the media will not report anymore that the banks forgave Reno for two years, payments on that debt, that they don't have the money to pay. At least they don't, they're not paying it, so you have to assume they don't have the money. Actually, I didn't come up here to be a total curmudgeon. Two ladies said, okay. Anyway, that's really about all I have to say. I do want to reiterate that I support all of the fire departments. And by the way, that gentleman who was just up here, it should be talking about the fire department grant to save 35 or 40 jobs. It should be called the Sam Deney Memorial Grant, because Sam Deney was the one who got Senator Reed to bring the money into town, hoping that Sam Deney would stop harping about that. How's that working out, folks?
Madam Clerk.
We might call it, if you leave the memorial part on.
Let me catch that, Mr. Ayatsi.
Tom Motherway, followed by Robert Parker.
Good afternoon, Tom Motherway. I'm a county resident, city property owner, U.S. taxpayer. I echo Mr. Church's comments with respect to the SAFER grant. I think the representations the city used for its service area and the grant were really county data, county statistics. I think they're material representations, and I think they're false, regardless of the number, Mr. Mayor, that was applied for. By the way, it was 24 positions on one and 10 on another. This was done at a time after the county commission voted to terminate the interlocal agreement. And what's it done for? It's going to add to our deficits. It's going to add to the debt that my children, my grandchildren inherit, and all to support a four-man contract in Reno, the only such contract in northern Nevada. I think it should be terminated. I think the money should go back to the Treasury. Thank you.
Robert Parker, followed by Cliff Low.
I live in Galena Forest. I own property in Incline Village. This is a follow-up to Mr. Motherway's comment. The grant money doesn't come from Reno city residents. It comes from all of us. We all pay taxes. Every single person in this room and everybody who lives in this county pays taxes for these grants. In the grant application, Reno stipulated the entire population of Washoe County, except for Sparks, would be covered, and it stipulated it would provide automatic aid and mutual aid. Now they're not planning to do that. So in my view, you're not protecting 100,000 residents of the county any longer, and so the grant should either be rejected or split between the county and the city, since you applied for it to protect the county. Thank you.
Cliff Low, followed by-
Let me say something before you go. We had a grant that we had applied for at one time that had 10 people in it. That was one grant that's going to expire or was going to expire. Then while we were still working, trying to get together and working together, we had applied for 24. And then, when we found out we weren't going to be together, then back in April or May or whatever it was, we went back and applied for the bigger grant. And that's a scenario of what it is, and it's taxpayers from all over the country that are paying for it.
Cliff Low, followed by Alex Kukulas.
Good afternoon. My name is Cliff Low. I'm currently a resident of unincorporated Washoe County. I want to tell you about something that you already know about. Not that I used to be a resident of Reno, but I did use to be a resident of Reno, and I also considered myself at the time to be a resident of Washoe County. But what I want to ask all of you to do today is to keep something in mind and place something in context in your conversations today. And that is that people are going to loosely talk about, including public comments, maybe even myself, we'll talk about the county, and we'll talk about the city of Reno and the city of Sparks. But even though we're meeting in the Washoe County Commission chambers, and even though the representatives here are the county commissioners, they don't sit here as the chairman properly pointed out. They do not sit here as the Washoe County Commissioners. They sit here as the Board of Fire Commissioners. They're representing Truckee Meadows and Sierra Fire Protection Districts. They are very different from the county. They don't cover the entire area of the county. And most importantly, they have a very separate and distinct source of funding. People who live in other parts of the county and people who live in Reno don't pay into those funds. So when you're talking about your arrangements today, please keep in mind, and I hope the press will also be fair in their coverage of this, and understand that you're talking about these districts, which have specific funding sources, which are to be spent for just for the purpose of providing fire and emergency medical service for the specific area, subject, of course, to mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. I hope you will keep that in mind when you have your discussions today. Thank you.
Alex Kukulas, followed by Peggy Lear Bowlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Alex Kukulas, President of Truckee Meadows Firefighters Association. I'm here to address all of you in regard to the automatic aid issue that's been going on. We, as those out in the field, have observed a lot of problems, of course, with the lack of that aid agreement already in just the few weeks that we've been doing this. I've heard the comments made that there's no, the perception that there's no mutual in the mutual aid agreement. I definitely want to focus more on the automatic aid side that we're not providing right now, but there always has been a mutual side to this thing, historically, as long as we've ever provided it, and there should be in the future. But I want everyone to understand that people pass through each other's jurisdictions every day, whether they're a resident of the unincorporated areas or a resident of the city. They pass through. So if someone's driving from the unincorporated areas up the freeway, let's use by Demone Ranch, for example, Station 14, it's a district station. It's a city area, it's jurisdiction on the freeway. If someone gets in an accident right there, that may be a county resident in an accident on the freeway, and currently, our automatic aid agreement won't send that station that's right there. Is that good policy? I don't understand it. We've already witnessed numerous incidents occurring all around our stations, and it's, I think people are going to suffer, and electing not to send the closest resource is decreasing the chance of survival for those people. Something else I don't know if everyone understands or not, but there's three county stations that are in the city limits. That one at Demone Ranch, the one in Stead, and the one next door to Boomtown, well within the city limits. So if there's an incident, whether it's a medical, a vehicle accident, a fire that occurs anywhere in that area, right now, you're not notifying us. The city's not. It's wrong. It's sacrificing those people in that area. We need to fix this. There's been three incidents, at least, that I'd like to mention here for you. There's probably been numerous more. We're not notified about them, so we don't even know, not aware of them. But just on July 4th, two motor vehicle accidents in the intersection right next to the station in Stead. They were never notified, that station. It's within 100 feet. What was the outcome for those patients? I don't know. Was it impacted by us not sending them? Possibly. There was a structured fire the very next day out in Stead. Reno had to send resources from well within the city, from downtown, to get to that fire. Did it impact it? I don't know. But you see where I'm going. This may, and it will eventually in the future. Also, on July 5th, Care Flight was sent to a critical cardiac patient. They landed in the station at Boomtown. Our station was never notified of it. They were out in district. They could have responded to Boomtown with our paramedics to help take care, but they weren't notified. This isn't good policy, so please, please reconsider this and do the right thing. Thank you.
Peggy Lear Bowlin.
For the record, my name is Peggy Lear Bowlin, and I want to talk to you about the goal. It says here, Board of Commissioners for the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and the Sierra Fire District and the Reno City Council and the Sparks City Council. I think the goal is to protect lives from fire in our community, and I think that's always been the goal. And then money got in the way. And then a rule from the national level about if you have to respond and send people into a burning building, you need to have a four-man crew, two on the outside and two on the inside, so they can work together to save lives if that was the situation. And then money entered into it again, and we decided that we needed another fire station out in the Southwest. And maybe it was built without planning for funding, for putting in the equipment, or putting in the personnel. And so it was Rob Peter, Pay Paul, at least the public, my perception, so that I put it all myself, so nobody has to worry about this. We need to have, Rob Peter to Pay Paul, and have fire stations without firemen or women available in the station, have brown stations. Then we had a Callan Ranch fire. I think I've got my chronology pretty much in effect. This was the second Callan Ranch fire. There was one before, and a friend of mine happened to fight that fire, so I speak, I know a judge would call it, Judge Judy would call it hearsay, but he said, as soon as they got notice of the fire from the power lines rapping and sparking, and the fire started up in the canyon in about exactly the same place, and the winds were greater, that they were able to get there and get it out, because the fire station was manned. I'm not saying that people lost anything or gained anything, whether or not it was manned. I'm saying that response time is key here. Lives are on the line. I want you to go back to the goal. I want you to work together with automatic response. Closest station responds, the other stations get there as quick as we can. Heck, we almost lost Boomtown. I think it was April 23rd, a power surge, a big old fire, and I was coming for the Verde Seniors Potluck, coming around the bend in the Truckee River, and I could see the flames almost as high as to the brown level of this room. And the notice that the people, the Verde Fire Station got was, try and save Boomtown, because it was just north, between the campground and the actual structure of Boomtown. Please. Their response time was the most immediate. It took about 10 minutes, because I sort of parked my car, and I watched what happened, and I could see when fire trucks came and went. That response time was horrible, only because of how much distance they had to travel. The response time of 35 was fantastic. They went across the freeway, had to fool with that idiotic configuration they have. When they put in Cabela's, they put in a new driving configuration. Oh, shoot. It's so important. May I please?
Need to wrap your comments up, Peggy.
Okay, I'll wrap my comments up. What I really want you to do is go back to automatic response time. I want you to work to pass the bond issue that gets our services back up, and don't sell it as a $40, some odd dollar bond issue. Sell it as $3 a month or such, so that we can pay for our senior services and our fire department and that sort of thing. And Bob Koschel, you personally, I want you to be the hero I know you can be, and I want you to do whatever it is you have to do.
Thank you, Peggy.
I'm finishing my sentence, please. I want you to do whatever you have to do to make the land underneath the fire station across from Boomtown a place for a fire station. Revert back to you if it's not used as such.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for talking over you.
Madam Clerk.
Larry Leavick.
Good afternoon to the Commission and the Council. LJ Leavick in Galena Forest. It's interesting to me to note that within all the discussions of a pending mutual aid pact, that there seems to be a focus on preventing the citizens of the city of Reno from having to subsidize fire protection for citizens of the county, and that would be on an emergency basis. No one, to my knowledge, is advocating putting the city in a position of primary provider for such services. During the tenure of the primary interlocal agreement between Truckee Meadows and the city, the areas of West Washoe Valley, for example, who were within the jurisdiction of Truckee Meadows District, were routinely served by the firefighters of the Sierra District. Was this not unfair to the taxpayers and citizens of the Sierra District? Where were the purveyors of equity then? Currently, a federal SAFER grant, which is funding jobs for a substantial number of Reno firefighters, comes from tax revenues of all citizens of northern Nevada, and as the mayor pointed out, from all the country, for that matter, not just those who reside within the city of Reno. Are we then not subsidizing fire protection for the residents of Reno? Perhaps we should reconsider what's at stake here. Who will be the spokesman to explain the first casualty resulting from a policy of noncooperation between our fire services? I suspect the line for that will be very, very short.
I have no others, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item number four, approval of the agenda. Any questions on approval of agenda? Is there a motion from, the motion by Commissioner Brederen, seconded by Commissioner Weber? Current commissioners only, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, I have it. Mr. Mayor.
Same motion. Motion, seconded, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Manager, that takes us to item number five. You want to introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item five is discussion possible approval of amendments to the June 2012 Cooperative Agreement between Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and the city of Reno on behalf of the Reno Fire Department for mutual aid by the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, the Sierra Fire Protection District, and the city of Reno.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Chief Moore.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Board of Fire Commissioners, City Council. For the record, Charlie Moore, Fire Chief, Truckee Meadows Fire District. Earlier today, the Board of Fire Commissioners approved an amended mutual aid agreement for consideration by Reno City Council, and I'd like to just briefly go over some of those changes, but preface my comments by saying that any fire department, no matter how big you are, is from time to time-
Just a second, Chief. There's a question from Mayor Koschel about which agreement are we talking about? Yeah, he's talking about the county, but which agreement for the county?
It is the agreement that was forwarded to the Reno City Council last Thursday about 5:00 o'clock.
Last Friday, Thursday, Friday?
Came in on Friday at 5:00. So the city hadn't even seen it, so I'm just wondering which one it was.
All right, it's that one.
Is it the cooperative agreement between Truckee Meadows Fire District and the city of Reno on behalf of the Reno Fire Department, or is it another one?
It is that one, Mayor. There should be some blue text highlighting the changes. It's amended. It says amended at the title.
No.
Nine total pages.
Does it look like that without the blue?
No, I don't have anything like that.
I got this thing from our attorney. I don't know if it's the same document or not.
It's the back?
No. Is that it? I don't have a copy of it.
Say the same thing, I don't know.
Is it? Cadence, is this it? It's all caps, amended changes.
Is this your back?
Yeah, this is the one.
It's the cheapest cost. For the truest cost.
Was it my first stack?
No.
It was my first stack.
You guys voted on something different today.
I don't have the, I don't have the changes and stuff that they sent over on Friday. They have blue markings on theirs, and we don't have them.
It's the one that says amended at the top here?
This came in Friday afternoon?
I believe it may have come in very late Thursday.
Was it late Thursday? I thought it was Friday afternoon. Sorry.
I have this thing from our attorney that talked about the changes.
Yeah. So are you satisfied? Do you have what you need?
I think so, yes.
Okay, continue, Chief.
From time to time, all of us need help from one another, particularly in fire departments. None of us can really design a fire protection system that can cover every eventuality, every disaster, every large fire. Most recently, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District needed mutual aid on the Ironwood Fire, which was some 640 acres. The city of Reno needed some help with the Pine Haven Fire. Going back in time, the Alexander Apartment Fires, where 22 buildings were fully involved in fire on arrival, there are examples both locally and across the country. So none of us can design the church for Easter Sunday, and when those big events happen, we need to depend on each other to help each other out in a time of crisis. So that's really what mutual aid is, is helping each other on a case-by-case basis. When our resources are overwhelmed and the public is at risk, we have no other choice except to help each other. So by way of background, when I last visited Reno City Council on July, I believe it was 11th or 12th, perhaps, I presented some changes. I presented the agreement that the Board of Fire Commissioners approved to the Reno City Council, and Reno City Council then amended that agreement, and I brought- On page two, paragraph 1C, I believed and recommended to the Board of Fire Commissioners that the language that the City of Reno proposed in about the middle of the paragraph where it said mutual aid is "the providing of emergency response services assistance across jurisdictional boundaries upon specific request due to an incident that exceeds and exhausts the entire capacity of medical and/or fire-based resources of the requesting agency." It's my belief that that paragraph is a bit ambiguous, in that I really don't know what that means, and it's important to know what that means when there's a crisis unfolding. Exceeding the entire capacity of the department could mean that the regular resources around the proximity of the fire, say if we have a fire down south, does that mean I exhaust all my southern resources? Does it mean that I have to bring all the northern resources down? Does it mean that I have to exhaust, in addition to that, the volunteer resources? Do I have to call my off-duty paid staff back? So, fire chiefs need discretion and they need clarity when we need to call for help. I believe the standard ought to be is that a broad policy is approving the mutual aid agreement and giving the discretion to the fire chiefs to decide when we need to call for help, and when we need to provide help, how much we can possibly give you and still keep our citizens safe in our own jurisdictions. The beauty of that is when you need to call for mutual aid, you get a little help from a lot of jurisdictions, and then when all the resources are assembled at the fire, you've got a pretty big firefighting force. So no one agency has depleted its resources. Just last night, we provided mutual aid to Story County on a structured fire in Virginia City. We get help from the City of Sparks. We give help to the City of Sparks. We have a history of helping one another when we run out of resources. Sometimes that can be for a lot of calls all at once, sometimes it can be all one big call. So it really is hard for me to understand how I could apply that particular language to when I might need mutual aid assistance. So what we propose as an alternative language there is to say exceeds the regular capacity of the requesting agency. Going down to paragraph two, request for mutual aid. In a paragraph, and I'm summarizing the major changes that we've made to the agreement. In paragraph two, the City of Reno wanted to limit the ability to call for mutual aid by a career officer being on the scene of the fire. Just last Sunday night, we had a terrible lightning storm come through. We were running probably three structured fire calls, as well as about six or seven brush fires, and they all happened within about the span of 45 minutes. Some of those calls were simultaneous to one another. Sometimes that's going to happen, and we're going to run out of resources, and it's not possible for any jurisdiction, I don't believe, in this area to have a command officer or a career officer at the scene of the fire prying to call for help. Using perhaps the Alexander Apartment Fire again. Some of the tools that we use to assess whether or not we need mutual aid is the dispatch information. Dispatch information comes in and says that there's 22 buildings on fire, send the world. You have pretty good reliability that that is a fire that's going to need mutual aid, and you shouldn't necessarily need to have a command officer on the scene to say, yep, there's 22 buildings on fire, now I need mutual aid.
Excuse me, Chief, there's been a question about the Alexander Fire. Would you want to explain that?
Alexander Apartment Fire, which was south Reno some few years ago.
Okay, so you're talking about the ones down south, when we were all still together?
Yes, yeah. But in that case, Mr. Mayor, Sierra Fire Protection District provided mutual aid to the City of Reno.
Sure, they came in, so, but everybody was there.
So my point of that is that that's just a fire that, based on dispatch information, and you're driving to the scene, you can see the flames, you shouldn't necessarily have to have a command officer on the scene to evaluate it first before you call mutual aid. So I've recommended some clarity to that by saying in the blue text, however, if it is impractical, impractical for the career officer to be on the scene to perform the evaluations described above, the career officer shall perform, perform those evaluations consistent with the best, with their best efforts and judgment. I think those are the two biggest changes in summary of what we've proposed to amend to the City of Reno's agreement that you sent us last July 12th. I'd like to echo again the need for giving fire chiefs broad discretion to make decisions, because no one fire is ever the same. No one situation is ever the same. They're all a little bit different. And what fire chiefs need on the scene of an emergency is to be able to make good decisions. And if we make bad decisions, you hold us accountable. And so I think that I would recommend to you that the policy that you ought to recommend, again, is that, a broad framework of agreeing to help each other, but giving the fire chiefs the discretion to call it in, to give it as we see fit and as we're trained to do.
Questions for the chief? Now this, I'm sorry, Councilwoman's brother.
Chief, what's the, how long does this agreement go? July, it says it's effective is July 1st, 2012, but how long is this particular agreement?
I'll defer to council, but I would think that it would be until terminated. No? Five years? I stand corrected.
Five years? And is there a clause in here that we can terminate cadence on 10?
Termination is on page six of nine, and any party to the agreement can terminate within 30 days, written notice.
Okay, because the one I'm looking at says it can only be terminated by mutual consent.
May be terminated by mutual consent of all the agencies, or by either agency without cause upon 30 days' written notice.
That's all I have right now.
Yeah, Chief, on 1C, you said you didn't understand the definition of exhaust the entire, because whether it was in Washoe Valley or Sun Valley, whatever. How is that different when you say the regular capacity? Does that mean the regular capacity of your entire service, or just the regular capacity of Washoe Valley, or the regular capacity? I don't see how changing that word changes your problem with the definition.
I would define it as, as deploying as many resources as I possibly can to control the fire, but not exhausting my entire department, so that I have some capacity to answer additional calls.
Okay, and then on the next page, because you were worried about definitions, what is practical? You said you're going to make all, if it's impractical for the career officer to be on, what is, how are you going to define impractical?
Impractical would be when we have a report of several fires burning at the same time, or we have, like in my example, dispatch information and multiple 911 calls come in to say that this is a really big fire, and at the discretion of the battalion chief or the fire chief, you'd make the call without having to necessarily see it and call for mutual aid at that time.
And how often have you had to call for mutual aid from Sparks?
Bob, do you still have that graphic? I can put this up for you, Councilman. I presented this analysis to the Board of Fire Commissioners early this morning. It is from July 1st to present. So in column one is mutual aid given by Truckee Meadows to the agencies on the left, mutual aid received, automatic aid received, and automatic aid given. I would preface the automatic aid received in the North Lake Tahoe Truckee Meadows column, where it says four, that was actually two calls, it actually should be two. North Lake Tahoe self-dispatched to a call at the top of Mount Rose Highway without being in the incident string, but still we called it automatic aid. So, you know, roughly on balance, I'd say it's on par, close to 50/50, not exactly. But in any three weeks, that's not really a statistical base, that I would say that that's going to be the same thing going forward, and over time, it could be less for us, it could be more for us.
In three weeks, you've needed responses from Sparks 10 times. Three plus seven is 10.
They're messed up. This should have been flipped, given, received, see if that came up.
Yes. Many of those calls were, again, based on automatic aid, where we get a report of a structured fire in the City of Sparks, responds along with us, and we do the same for the City of Sparks.
And what's the county's adopted response time for a fire?
Depends on the area. Sometimes it's eight minutes.
Collin Ranch?
Collin Ranch, eight minutes.
Hidden Valley?
Eight minutes.
What's 12 minutes, then? What would be 12 minutes?
That's probably, you know, Pal, thank you, Katie, Palomino Valley, and actually in some of our rural areas, it may be as much as 20 minutes.
Okay, because I know you had those three from the Diamanti study. So there's, what's precedent, for me, what's precedent on setting up a mutual aid agreement is that both agencies have the capability to provide service 90, 95% of the time. It's not a day-to-day thing that you call for mutual aid. Now, we went through this scenario before, and I would like to ask, a house fire in Hidden Valley, you have a two-person crew that goes out there. You cannot fight that house fire from the inside with two people there. You have to call for help from somewhere else. If you call from your Arrow Creek Station, you told me that's a 12-minute response time to get from...
10 to 12.
Even 10. After your other crew gets there, you're not, you cannot meet your eight-minute timeline in Hidden Valley for a house fire.
We can respond in eight minutes. We may not start the suppression operation for 10 minutes.
So is that what you mean, and maybe I got that wrong? So the response time is just getting anyone on scene, whether they can perform firefighting duties or not?
We respond to a lot of different calls, not just...
I'm asking for the specific one. This is a firefighting issue, so a house fire. You could not possibly have four people there within 12 minutes.
We can start the suppression operation in about 10.
But that still doesn't meet your guidelines. So to meet your guidelines, you would have to call for mutual aid from the City of Reno on any, any house fire in Hidden Valley or Collin Ranch. And how many, how many people do you have at your Arrow Creek Station at any one time?
Three to four.
Three to four. So depending on the day, you might not be able to respond to a house fire in Arrow Creek to actually get inside and fight the fire? If there's a day where there's only a three-person crew there?
It's going to be, the effective firefighting force is going to be the initial attack, the initial response of the station, just like the City of Sparks has three, just like North Lake Tahoe has three, and just like just about everybody else that has three. Yes, you're either going to wait for a command officer, or you'll have four on the, on the scene with a command officer, or will be supplemented by the second due, or by volunteers.
I know much has been said about Reno and their four-person crews, but we don't have that issue, do we? We get to a fire, we can start suppression, second, we show up.
I would argue that not always. Some of your crew gets to have, what, two hours off per day?
No, there's four people, it has to be on any truck before it rolls. If you're going to make these accusations like you usually do, you better get informed of the contract.
There's no accusation.
Okay. So my whole purpose in this mutual aid thing, what my problem is, you do not have a fire service that can provide day-to-day fire coverage for the Truckee Meadows Sierra Fire District. You are going to require help from Reno and Sparks on an everyday, every time there's a house fire, you're going to need mutual aid. And then what you told me also is if you called from the Arrow Creek Station to go to Hidden Valley, you've got no one covering down there. You guys cannot cover two house fires at any one time.
We've already covered two fires at the same time, Councilman. We had a simultaneous dispatch to a structured fire, and a simultaneous dispatch to a brush fire. One was in the southern area, and one was in the northern area.
You said house fires. One's a brush fire, one's a house fire. Brush fire, you can start with two people, not a house fire. So did you respond to two house fires so far with four people, four-person crew, where you can get in there and start suppression from the inside?
On arrival of the first engine, no.
Okay. I just, it should be equal. If it's mutual aid, it should be equal. If we rely on you, if, if one of our stations is empty for a time because we're fighting a fire, and we request mutual aid from you, you cannot provide us the same service that we're providing you. You cannot go in, if it's in Reno, and fight the fire from day, from second one. You have to wait for a second crew to show up. So that's the, that's my issue, is it's not equal and fair and across the board.
Which is not necessarily equal, fair, and across the board with all of our jurisdictions. For instance, North Lyon County.
You know, we're talking about us.
And talking to Darrell Cleveland, we're talking about mutual aid and how we respond to help with them. Chief Cleveland tells me that in virtually every fire that I have, I have to call mutual aid. I'm a small department. I can't assemble four people on the scene within any reasonable amount of time, and virtually every single fire that we have, we have to call mutual aid. I don't begrudge North Lyon County, or Central Lyon County, or North Lake Tahoe, or the City of Sparks, because they can't get four people on with the first engine. That's a, that's a service-level decision that's made by the Board of Fire Commissioners, not me. My point is, is when somebody calls for help, somebody's life is threatened. If we're going to worry about what's equal, you're right, I can't make it equal. So if we're going to base the approval on this thing of all things being equal, then I can't help you.
Well, I don't think you could help me in any event, but the purpose that we're at this situation here is because the Board of County Fire Commissioners decided that money was more important than the safety. And so they cut down the crews, and they did all this to save money, and you were brought in to help save that money. And you've been touting to the public and the press and everyone out there that you have the largest firefighting crew in all of western United States or something. And now you're sitting up here finally, finally, after this is split up, telling us that you're in the same boat as Nor, as North Lyon County. You cannot get four people on a house fire in a sufficient amount of time. I don't begrudge them that either. What I begrudge is you telling me that you can publicly, but privately you know you can't. And now I'm hearing for the first time you're admitting that you cannot respond to a house fire in your own response times of eight minutes. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Chief, your, your travel times from Arrow Creek to Hidden Valley, or from Walmart to Hidden Valley, after Googling and looking at several different scenarios, they come out 17 minutes, taking three off for red lights and siren. We're still not there in eight minutes, or 12 minutes.
Station 14 will probably get there in 10 minutes, eight to 10.
It can. 14 is where? Walmart?
It's Diamanti Ranch, at Walmart.
There's no way. There's no way. There's no way it can be there in a reasonable period of time to help that two-man crew. I've Googled them and played with them, and I had other people Google them, because I'm not real good at it. But I have driven it also. Got stopped by a police officer going a little fast the other night. Luckily, he knew me and let me go.
Mayor, structured fires are only a small part of what we do, less than 2%, less than 2%.
No, I understand.
And the strategy that the Board of Fire Commissioners adopted when we designed this new department was that 85 to 90% of our calls are EMS. I attended a community barbecue at Hidden Valley. They invited me to go out there and tell them, here's what we're doing. We got a crew of two. I walked the entire length of that park with probably 100 people there, and not one citizen told me, what do you mean, you've only got two people here? You know what they, you know what they said? They said, we're glad that you're here because we're concerned about our medical situation. They're elderly folks, and they want a firefighter there pronto when they have a medical emergency. If that's a bad decision to try to get a fire truck to somebody who's having a cardiac arrest, or having some sort of life-threatening condition that we can correct, and getting there in less than five minutes once we have our new station...
I don't disagree.
Then that's what our strategy is based on.
Okay, but I mean, earlier your study wasn't that way, and so I just wondered where it changed.
Any other questions for the chief? Commissioner Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like a little report. You mentioned earlier about the stead area and Station 13 and some response out there. There's an airport out there, and now with Station 9 being open, how is that working? The Station 9 and Station 13 with the pretty densely populated area out there with the airport, how, how is that working? How would mutual aid work in that, in that area?
Well, it's not working right now, Commissioner, but if we had some sort of mutual aid or cooperative agreement, we would supplement the City of Reno's resources to whenever they had a fire. So you can assemble an effective firefighting force a lot faster if we're cooperating rather than not cooperate. Interestingly enough...
How would mutual aid work in that, in that area?
Well, it's not working right now, Commissioner. But if we had some sort of mutual aid or cooperative agreement, we would supplement the City of Reno's resources to whenever they had a fire. So you can assemble an effective firefighting force a lot faster if we're cooperating rather than not cooperate. Interestingly enough, let me shift the focus to Boomtown. Boomtown called us just the other night. Security called the station and said, we have a medical emergency at the casino. Would you please come over and help? And so we did. And we let the City of Reno know, we're responding into your jurisdiction. We've been asked by security at the casino to respond over, please help us. What do we do in a situation like that?
Well, I, I'm hearing from my, from a council member, Dorch, that we do have mutual aid right now. And so my question is, is if there is an accident, a traffic accident, which I've witnessed in, in the area numerous times at the stead, stead and Silver Lake Road, where I think you said that there was an accident there, and Station 13, who is right there, wasn't called?
Right. Correct.
So is that mutual aid, or is it mutual aid gone wrong? Gone bad? Okay.
That's automatic aid. And again, automatic aid is sending the closest resource to whoever the, the emergency is regardless of jurisdiction.
Okay. So it is working in the area, or it is not?
No.
Okay. So then my second question is, is you haven't mentioned about volunteers that we are able to use to attend or go to a house fire, or be the backup person. Is that working for Washoe County, or for, for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District?
It's working very well. The feedback I've given to the Board of Fire Commissioners from emails from the volunteer chiefs has been glowing. They're glad to be finally involved in responding and serving their communities. They've stood up a number of times. They stood up for us on July 1st, on July 4th. In the lightning storm that came through, we used volunteer resources to respond in a variety of ways, not only to supplement the career, but also to be a first, an initial response to a fire. We were that taxed.
Chief Moore, how many volunteer fire stations do we have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? Throughout the county?
Yes.
Are they fully manned?
With the exception of West Washoe Valley, they're in a rebuilding mode. But when you say manned--
Or do they have people around 24/7? Or they just called in?
Not at the station, but they respond as needed.
Yeah, because when I was in Boomtown, the volunteer fire department was my first responder. In those days, they contracted with Sparks to be my first responder. So I made sure they were very happy people.
They're good folks.
They're good folks. There's nothing wrong with them.
Other questions for Chief Moore on this item, which is talking about mutual aid, not auto aid. Sorry, Commissioner, Councilwoman.
Yeah, and Chief Moore, can you put up that graph again on the, that you had showed earlier?
I can't, but Bob can.
On the response from the other jurisdictions, if you would?
Sure.
And then, I don't know, our chief, I just want to make sure, is, are those the correct numbers from Reno? If I could ask Chief Hernandez, because I thought we were presented something differently. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Good afternoon, members of the respected elected boards, managers, attorneys. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. To the best of my knowledge, we have not requested any mutual aid from the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. And I believe the automatic aid given was a dispatching error. I'm going to look over to Mr. Chisel, but I believe it was a dispatching error. With respect, the only, the only thing that I could possibly--
Which fire was that on, which fire was that on the dispatching error?
I believe that was a medical call, and the dispatcher took it upon herself to dispatch the Truckee Meadows system. The only call that I could possibly think of that would qualify for any type of mutual aid would have been the Pine Haven fire. And that was a jurisdictional question. That was the one up on, above Collin Ranch. We, we received the call. We were the first arriving engine company, the first arriving battalion chief. There was a question as to whether it was jur-- it might have been a jurisdictional issue, and, and it was decided to call Truckee Meadows to determine, in fact, this may burn into their district. We unified command. Once we realized it was completely within the City of Reno's sphere of info, or inside the City of Reno's jurisdiction proper, we relieved the Truckee Meadows crews that were there, and we handled the incident with the staff that we had. The only other partners that we had on the fire were those fire, were the U.S. Forestry Service, and we did have some assistance from Nevada Division of Forestry because they were, they were directly impacted by that fire. But I cannot, and I'm looking over at my operations, chief, but I can't, I can't remember specifically requesting mutual aid or automatic aid from the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District at all.
Chief, and then I'd like to follow up on that. Chief Moore, can you address that? Because I'm assuming this is your graph. Can you give those specific instances where we, why those numbers are up there?
Mutual aid given would have been, one, certainly the Pine Haven fire. I don't know, I don't recall what the second one would be. And mutual aid received, that escapes me. I don't know the nature of the call.
Okay.
I could look it up.
I, I just think when we're, I mean, this is important, is we're looking at entering into an agreement, that we make sure that we have the accurate numbers given here, because I think it does go back to Councilman Iasi's concern about what the participation level is. And then I think Chief Hernandez, you had said one was a medical call for, for dispatch?
I think I just recall what the other one was.
Okay.
There was a citizen who came over to Station 14, and Walmart banged on the door and said that there was a child that was stuck in a shopping cart. So we self-dispatched ourselves to that. I think we let the City of Reno know, we freed the child, and went back. So we listed that as assistance given to you. Seems reasonable.
Okay. But on your chart, even when you look at your numbers, you say total numbers of fires. So these, am I wrong that you're saying these instances were fires? I, and now I'm hearing medical.
No, they not, may, may not necessarily be fires. They just may be calls of any particular nature.
Councilman Guston?
Thank you. Well, I have both chiefs there. I just wanted to ask a question that, when the city council sent back a counterproposal on the mutual aid, we had talked about reducing 12 hours to three hours, and I noticed it's back, it's 12 hours in the amended, what's it called? The amended cooperative agreement that the chief sent back. So my question is, for either of you or both of you, do you know what percentage of the incidents last longer than 12 hours? Or conversely, which lasts less than 12 hours?
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. Typically, depending on the, the type of fire, on a day-to-day basis, if it's a structure fire, it'll be well within 12 hours. If it's a long-term campaign, for example, Pine Haven, Ironwood, Collin, West Washoe Valley fire that we had last year, that would be a long-term event that would exceed 12 hours. Right off the top of my head, council member, I cannot give you a specific percentage. But typically, a routine house fire is managed within 12 hours. It's those extraordinary events that, that exceed 12 hours that, that would kick in the fiscal component, where it enables either entity to charge the requesting agency from the timable arm to the time that they're released.
And I, I understand, it depends on the event. I don't know if, if Chief Moore, do you have any different information about that? Because I have another question which relates to that.
Natural disasters will typically go beyond 12 hours. Wildland fires, obviously.
So pretty much the same answer. Okay. I, I guess, and you haven't certainly been here long enough to, and maybe you've looked at the, the history and can answer the question, but because there's been an undercurrent theme about, about paying for this, the mutual aid, and would it be lopsided? Your chart is a little more lopsided than I thought it would be. I don't look at it as being 50/50 when you look at 10 versus 6, you know? Well, anyway. So I guess Chief Hernandez, you've been here longer. So in your experience in the mutual aid question, when it, when it comes, at the end of the year, at the end of the, whatever given time period, is it a break even? I, I know there's some question about the, the billing, the inter-local agreement, et cetera, and that's still up in the air. And I, I got a chance just before this meeting to look at a little bit of it. But your experience, is it, is it a break even? Or is it a lopsided from one jurisdiction to the other?
Typically, when you, when you go back and you look at the historical performance with the Truckee Meadows Reno Consolidated Department was, it was typically a break even. And, and the rule of thumb is most larger departments give more than they get with respect to automatic aid and mutual aid. Having been here as long as I have, I could say that, you know, when we would go out and we would reach out to help out the City of Sparks, or Carson, or North Lyon, even as a consolidated department, it was typically about even. They would, they would provide what limited resources they could to us, and we would likewise lend that assistance out. So at the end of the day, you know, it, it's almost a wash. You have those extraordinary events, those extraordinary years where you have a high, you know, propensity for fire, fire activity, and of course, your, your numbers are going to be skewed. You're going to be, you're going to give more than you get.
Those extraordinary events, you, you would have the compensation because they'd be over 12 hours. Both chiefs said that those, okay. So if you, if you change that from 12 hours to six hours, or whatever number, does that skew the compensation much?
It could, yes. Because again, a typical house fire, you'll have crews on scene anywhere from two hours to six hours, just depending on, just your run-of-the-mill, bread-and-butter, standard structure fire. There's no such thing as, as the first engine putting out the fire. You have the requirement of a second engine and a third engine to overhaul to make sure that the facility or the home is secured and the fire is completely extinguished. You go into salvage and overhaul operations. That's where you assist the homeowner in bringing out their valuables and saving what they can. So just, again, 32 years in the business, when you roll up to a simple, you know, 2,000 square foot home, you're going to be there from, anywhere from three to, three to four hours minimum.
I guess the conclusion is, obviously, it should have been obvious, I probably shouldn't have asked the question if you, if you made it six hours, it would skew it. But your experience and information is that at 12 hours, it's, it's a break even. It has been a break even historically.
I, I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brenner, did you?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with Chief Hernandez. The idea of, over the long term, these kinds of things breaking even, I mean, we can, we can, you know, get down in the weeds as far as the detail, but in my mind, we're here, I think we have an opportunity to make a statement about, okay, we, the thing kind of split up, and we have an opportunity to begin healing this, the rift, by coming together on this mutual aid. We still have to work on automatic aid. That's another topic. But the, I think this agreement's gone back and forth at least four or five times. And, you know, with wordsmithing and various kinds of positions, and I think the, the agreement that was approved today by the commission, and that sits in front of the City of Reno Council, is one that is, yeah, it isn't perfect. We're all making do with resources and, resources and revenues that make things tough. And I, I believe that it's important to the, the people that live within this community to have the maximum protection they possibly can achieve. And we need to, I, I believe it would be, we'd be best served in order to make a step forward by going forward with the agreement as put forth today.
Any other comments? Let's go to, oh, Commissioner, Councilman Iasi.
Well, that being said, my, I question, I guess, maybe to, to our staff, as this agreement's gone back three or four times, what's changed from what, I mean, I know the city council said we'd like to have three hours, back to 12? We said we wanted to have, make sure someone was on scene. That got taken out. Exhaust the entirety. It got changed to what the county wants it to be. So where's, I know it's gone back and forth, but it hasn't ever changed.
You said it went back and forth.
Right.
Did it happen?
So when we get back to like the 12 hours and three hours, I understood that you got the, the comment from Chief Moore that three hours was unworkable. Why is three hours unworkable for payment as opposed to 12? Whoever, anyone, that's what I heard, that when I read the minutes of the meeting, that's what was stated, was three hours was unworkable. Why is that unworkable?
For the record, Charlie Moore. Three hours is just the standard that's different in the community. We offer the City of Sparks 12 hours. City of Sparks offers us 12 hours.
No, you stated it was, you stated it was unworkable. That's the question I asked, not standard.
North Lake Tahoe provides us 12 hours. We do the same. It's the standard in the community where we provide 12 hours to each other. I don't recall saying it was unworkable, but three hours seems like a de minimis amount of time. And I guess my question is, why are we being treated differently with three hours as opposed to what the community standard is? So that's why I re-proposed 12 hours.
Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chief Moore, I believe that, when we talked about this last time, our counselor, Mr. Liparelli, explained that, that would put you in a position by which you would have to weigh the costs and benefits on as to whom to call, rather than what was the best service and closest service. So am I helping you remember why the three hours was considered not only de minimis, but also put you in a position to try to calculate in a moment's notice what would be the best use of the, the resources? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, thank you for helping me recall that.
You're welcome.
So if you're on the scene of a fire, it, it's difficult for a fire ground commander to know that resource is going to start costing me money after three hours, and that resource over there is going to be still provided under mutual aid for another eight. So it's just difficult to keep track of that, although the money may not be that paramount. I think that's just simply the issue. So you're looking at that resource, and now it's going to start costing you money. You want to think about releasing it rather than just putting out the fire. I think that's where I was coming from.
I wonder, have we considered as a group to maybe do this for a temporary amount of time? If you're amiable to the language, to see exactly what the fallout of this is, and true them up after that? Maybe a full season, maybe a quarter, maybe six months? To see if there is, as I had said at our last meeting, any, either side subsidizing each other in these, in this issue of mutual aid? Have, have we considered that?
Oh, I think your assistant city manager wants to respond to that. Is that all right, Mike? Or do you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't actually want to respond to that, but this may be a good time for me to correct something that was said earlier. Chief Moore confirmed, given the number five sign from me, that the term of this agreement is a five-year agreement. I must have been recalling one of the early drafts because it does go on until such time as it's terminated. So I just wanted to clarify that because people do read the minutes, to have that in there and have that not on Chief Moore since I gave him the wrong info. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman George?
Yeah, the, our last council meeting where we considered this, we, we actually agreed to go to the 12 hours. And to add some language in there where your chief, your chief was concerned with having someone on, on scene in extreme situations. So we said, okay, those are rare. Maybe we can have someone on, maybe we can put some language in there that will address those extreme situations where you're not able to have someone on scene. And we actually talked about possibly doing this for a six-month period of time. I mean, it is, as, as was stated, it can be terminated within 30 days at any time. So to try it, and then we could do an evaluation of the cost, you know, after, after a six-month timeframe or something like that. So we've had, we've had those discussions at the council. Prior to you guys requesting to have the question put on the ballot that you've had put on the ballot, I really thought we were moving along in a position where we were going to get this done. So we'll see how that goes.
Also, we had talked about straightening up the mutual aid part, but I see that the county's put in the forensics and the mutual aid instead--
True ups, Mr. Mary.
True ups, I mean. True ups. Chief, I'm kind of selfish like the people at Arrow Creek. I'd like to ask you a question. I live up in the Collin Ranch area. How long does it take you to get, where's your first responder from? Boomtown?
Boomtown, currently.
And how long does that take?
About 12 minutes until we get the new station built at Mogul, and then it reduces to eight minutes.
Okay. So now where, where would your second unit come from?
If, on a report of a structure fire, we're going to send Station 15, Station 14.
14 would take 23 minutes? And 13 would take 23 minutes?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Mayor.
They are.
I don't think it would take that long.
No, it takes 13, take off three for red lights and stuff, and maybe you're down to 20 minutes. So, anything in Collin Ranch, because Earl Creek could have solved their problem by putting a road at the top, and coming in with the station they had up there. They got this unit now, but they had to rob the Bowers Mansion station to be able to get a four-man crew up there, is that not correct? Maybe rob's not the proper word.
I don't think rob is the proper word.
Okay, well, you got them from a full station at Bowers Mansion down to a two-man crew.
There are two areas where we have that, Mayor, Bowers Mansion and Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley. But looking at it, there's no way you're going to have nine people on scene in, in the eight or nine minutes that you've said before.
It's going to take some time to develop a firefighting force there, yes.
Okay, so it's going, it'd be quite a while before you can do that.
Other questions? Councilwoman Sprowder.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with Chief Hernandez on Councilman Guston's question, the break even question. Chief, I, I want to dive into that a little bit more, because given this scenario of, I get it, because as a consolidated department, there were those instances where you'd have major fires, and I think what, what we're really talking about here is potentially things that aren't those catastrophes, the everyday operations, and if there are two structure fires at once, and, and Reno doing that response. Under the current scenario that's being proposed, do you believe that that's going to break even for both jurisdictions?
It would, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, it would depend on the number of times the jurisdiction calls us. Again, I'm going back on our historical record, when we were a consolidated department, and we were providing service to Carson, for example, we have no track history unless we go back prior to consolidation, so we have no track history to truly base what we would, what we could potentially give or receive from the Truckee Meadows system, because we've been consolidated for 10 years. But, again, just looking at it from, from a global perspective, you know, we are a busy community, and that's been proven time and again. And I think at the end, because we're in, in new, new territory here, we don't know the full capabilities of how the Truckee Meadows system, when tested and stressed, what their capabilities will be with respect to the utilization of volunteers, and their ability to call back crews, you know, multiple fires at the same time, you know, it, it's hard to say whether we'll break even or not, my gut reaction is we likely will. But then again, we have no historical data to factually, you know, base that on.
Okay, but how, how, I guess, on the other side, how would they be helping us if we had the two structure fires, for instance, and, and we were called, given that scenario before, then it would be Reno responding, Reno responding? And as we look at the graphs up here that were, was presented in that three-week period of time, and I realize that's just a snapshot, again, how is that equal? And we get down, I think there's been some comments made, that this should be about life safety and, and public safety above anything else, but we had a consolidated department that was working, I mean, that was responding and that was working. And we, all jurisdictions save money, there's no dispute to that. So, now, we have one jurisdiction that's decided to deconsolidate, for what reason? For financial reasons. So, I just, I think what I'm having a hard time for, and even based on the public testimony, is it's okay for one government to say, okay, we're going to move forward with a department that's deconsolidated to save money, but yet, as a city councilwoman who represents the City of Reno too, I've got to look, on the other hand, of, okay, we had a consolidated department that was working, everyone saved money, but also, we have this issue of, yes, we're funded by the SAFER grants for two years, what happens, Chief, when that expires? And how do you get around, I mean, we had a department that was working, how do we get around with, okay, the, the taxpayers in the City of Reno picking up the entire bill for really what would be a primary service, if you're talking about not the catastrophes, the day-to-day operations of, of fighting a structure fire, and, which can't be done with volunteers, and can't be done logistically without a four-man crew, and before, I mean, come on, those time periods, even according to the, the county's own study, the House would be up in flames by then in 12 minutes, those kind of response times.
Councilmember, you're correct. Given the example of Collin Ranch, we, we would bring to the table a four-person crew that could immediately go to work, and if I could preface that, there isn't an area of the City of Reno where we cannot immediately serve within our adopted response times. We recently had a structure fire instead, we had our first four-person crew that was able to immediately enter the structure and go to work, and, and they were to, they were capable of limiting the damage in that structure to the garage, it was a garage fire, they were able to enter, they were able to keep the fire contained to the garage and not spread, and we had a first do-in engine right at five minutes or less, with second and third crews arriving within about 12 minutes. There isn't an area of the City of Reno that can't be adequately and quickly serviced with our system. With respect to your, your question, what, what can we anticipate receiving from Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, at best a four-person crew, when they have that staffing available, with a delayed response, for example, in the Collin Ranch? Or, worst-case scenario, a three-person crew, or none at all if they're busy responding to a medical or, or another call for service, and their, their second engine company is coming from Walmart, or the south, or Station 18 in Cold Springs. So, it, it's, it's new ground for, for both systems. You know, again, I can, I can speak for what the City of Reno is currently getting and will get, as far as what we would receive from the county, is, is dependent on their, their daily staffing, which goes up and down, and their availability of resources. Again, it's no secret, we're a busy community, on any given day, we have multiple events. If one of their assets is out of pocket on a medical or, and Winamucca Ranch Road, for example, that creates a large response area. And if we are first do-in on a automatic aid or mutual aid, their second and third truck could be anywhere from 20 to 25 minutes away, whereas, we would have to augment our service, and that raises a whole nother issue of, of placing our crews in an untenable position where we would have an engine company respond, enter a structure, and not knowing when that second and third do-in engine could potentially arrive. So, again, this is new terr, you know, new territory for both, both entities. And, and this is why we were having the discussion with respect to, when you call for mutual aid, we want to have, you know, a, a trained officer on scene to make that evaluation, to make that determination that we do have assets on the ground, and it exceeds our capacity, we need help. And, and I'll be the first to admit, that butter spreads both ways. There will be times when the City of Reno could potentially need assistance from outside agencies. However, you know, the strength and the depth of resources that we currently enjoy are significant, are significant. And I can tell you, to the best of my knowledge, since July 1, we have not requested mutual aid or automatic aid from any jurisdiction. The City of Sparks, we have a mutual aid automatic aid with the City of Sparks. We provide automatic aid to the sewer treatment plant. The City of Sparks does not provide automatic aid to the City of Reno, because frankly, we don't need it. With respect to mutual aid, I, since July 1, we have not called the City of Sparks for any type of mutual aid. This is not to say that it couldn't potentially occur, you know, but again, you know, we, we have a certain standard, we have a, we have the depth of resources, we have the ability to respond quickly, we have the ability to enter, enter a structure fire immediately. And, and I, I want to also touch on the EMS issue as well. As a practicing medic for 12 years, and having served on an ambulance, you know, for, for that amount of time, two persons, even three persons, five people, on a multi-vehicle accident, which is a significant number of calls it could respond to, it's truly beneficial. The more boots on the ground, even if it's a medical call, is significantly, it makes a, a significant impact to that service delivery system. I believe that our system complements the REMS system well, but there are times when you have a motor vehicle accident, and you have four vehicles. So, you know, having a crew show up that's only there with two people, or even four, could quickly overwhelm that medical emergency. And I've, I've been on scene where you've had a van loaded with a family of six collide with a, a vehicle that had four passengers in it, and, and right immediately, you've already overtaxed your system in that local area. So, you know, to, to, to build a bare-bones system is a very tenuous thing to do, but again, you know, tho, those are, I, I hope I'm answering your question, but those are the, that, that's where we are right now.
But Chief, one, I want to get back to the Reno example, though. Let's say we respond in Hidden Valley, Maryland is out in Hidden Valley. What happens if there's a call in Donner Springs, and the Maryland truck is rolling and fighting the fire in Hidden Valley? Then what does that do to the response time to someone within the city limits?
It increases.
How, by how much?
Anywhere from the next do-in engine would be Station 12, that could be anywhere.
Which, I'm sorry, you guys always use the numbers, Station 12 would be what?
Station 12 is our temporary station, and once we get it built in the double diamond area in the south, anywhere from 12, 10 to 12 minutes, at least. We've got Station 3, but...
So, that would be the first engine to respond if we were helping on a fire, for instance, in Hidden Valley?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, let me just one minute, Mr. Chief, so you brought up something that I overlooked a minute ago. So, if Boomtown is busy somewhere else, where, where, and I should ask their chief, where's your next backup come from? Chief? Say you're tied up at Boomtown on something, where does your next vehicle come from? Because looking at all the times that I have, we're 20 minutes away from any of your vehicles being there.
Yeah, for a call in Boomtown, if we have a second response, is that what you're asking? We're going to have the resources of the Verdei Volunteer, Station 13, Station, Station 13 in Cold Springs, more likely Sun Valley, and Hidden Valley will assist.
Okay, because 13's about 23 minutes apart. The Volunteer Fire Department's probably going to be 10 to 12, because they got to rounden up everybody to come up. And Station 14 is 23 minutes away also, so I was just wondering, then you'd be calling for us for mutual aid to come in and back you up there?
I would have to argue that there's a thousand ways we could play this chess game.
I don't disagree with you at all, Chief, that's why I'd like to play it one way.
So, if, say there's a fire in downtown?
Yep.
And Station 12 needs to move up, then the southern half of the city is potentially exposed, in which case, we're the closest resource.
So, we have backups in those areas.
Rather than drive ourselves crazy about who's going to respond when and where and for what?
No, that's right.
I think the better course of action is to adopt a policy that gives broad discretion to the fire chiefs for dynamic situations, that you don't always know where trucks are going to be, what the call is going to be, and let the fire chiefs make the decision. If, if the response is skewed for one jurisdiction or another, then perhaps you can talk about truing it up at the end of the year, if there's some big discrepancy in terms of the numbers of calls that we make to one another.
I'd like to get the true-ups sitting there when you're talking about them, because so far, we haven't been able to get the true-ups. Other things have been added to them, so we hadn't gotten the true-ups, so that is a, that is a bone of contention.
And just add that our strategy was based on a different way of providing emergency services to our community. We were faced...
And then Councilman Guston.
I, I'm finding this incredible, that we're talking about cutting up all these different scenarios, they're set up to make the Truckee Meadows fire look like they can't cover things. And that isn't what we're here to do, we're here to protect the people that live in this area. And why don't, I would recommend that the, the city council approve the mutual aid agreement, and they can terminate it any time, give it a ti, a trial, you know, you can, you can, you know, you have the ability to terminate it. Let's put the people first, and let, and let's see how...
Y'all should have done that.
Excuse me, I'm...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I tried, I should have.
And let, let, let the numbers fall where they are, let's see if it's, works for both sides, if there's, if there's, and if it doesn't work, then good grief, you can terminate it, but, I mean, for the time being, let's put the people first, and this petty stuff, we've been do, dealing with this petty stuff for two years. Good grief, let's move on, get a mutual aid agreement, and see how it works.
Councilman Guston.
Well, the nature of my question was going to be very similar to Commissioner Bredernitz. So, Chief Hernandez, you just stepped up, let me ask you, other than some wordsmithing that has been done, and this presented to us today, this amended cooperative agreement, how does this differ from what we're currently doing now on a 30-day notice basis?
Well, that was my point, Councilmember, again, for the record, Mike Hernandez, we do have, we are operating under a mutual aid agreement right now. So, I, I would have to go back and look at the language, I, I don't recall, I believe it was the, the draft that was originated from the county that was sent over that we adopted in the interim, so that we would have a mutual aid agreement, and then work off some of the concerns, and that's where the back and forth went, so.
Looks like you're getting some legal help, but I, I think that, I understand, let's get something, I think we have in place, other than some wordsmithing about exhausting being eliminated, and a couple comments in mutual aid, don't we have this in effect right now?
Commissioner Guston, or Councilman Guston, Rob Boni, Reno City Attorney's Office, we do, we currently have a mutual aid agreement in effect, and other than some wordsmithing, as you've already talked about, such as having an on-scene requirement, and the new exception that Truckee Meadows has put in there, talking about impractical for a career officer to be on scene. The agreement that was initially passed does require career officers to be provided to the city, and that an incident commander be a career officer as well, if it's, you know, the city's responding, and these are just nuances that we have been working through based on the subsequent council meetings.
Okay, and I, I would suggest from some of the comments made, that Commissioner Jung said a period of time, and, and Councilman George responded, that we have talked about that. And, and just as an agreement or a comment here, that we will go for six months, whatever period of time, and see what the true-ups are, and see what the real expenses are, because you, you're right, Commissioner Bredernitz, I mean, the people are what's most important. I know we're squabbling a little about, about money, and a little bit about jurisdiction, and I, I'm like you, I, you know, I, I get lost on Station 14's going to come for Station 12, and if he moves, I'm going to jump him and take your king, I, you know, I, I, that is, I know it's important, but what's important, we have an agreement in place now. Let's go ahead with the agreement we have in place, and put some specificity in terms of a timeframe on it, and say, within this period of time, we're going to examine it and find out if it's working, and then we're going to correct it if it's not working. Thank you.
Councilman George, Paul Liparelli would like to make a, you know, one lawyer talks, and it's kind of like women going to the bathroom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to make sure that we have the same understanding, and I just maybe missing some information that, that could be added. My understanding is, in the week before July 1, the count, the Fire Board approved a mutual aid agreement that was considered the next day by the city council. The city council did not, approved the agreement that the Fire Board sent over there, but also made changes and asked that the changes be considered by the Fire Board at its very next meeting. So, if the agreement that is in place, it's everyone's understanding, that would be, that was the agreement that the Fire Board approved prior to July 1, and it did not include Sierra Fire Protection District, it had all the basic language in it that the mutual aid agreements have historically had, and so, if, if we're going to rely on that, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same agreement. I would submit that the agreement that the Fire Board approved today goes a lot further towards addressing the concerns that we understood the city council had about the potential misuse of mutual aid agreements, in that it defines mutual aid, excludes automatic aid, and contains other provisions that more aptly address some of the concerns that have been expressed. So, if there's a will on the part of the collective boards to have an agreement in place that can be tried for a while, the one approved today is a lot closer to what the city wants than the one that was approved prior to July 1, which did not include Sierra.
Thank you, Mr. Liparelli. Councilman George.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, yeah, I mean, the, the agreement that the city council approved was your, the agreement that you sent over, and, and the, we sent the changes back and said that if you don't adopt those changes, that we were going to send a letter terminating the agreement within 30 days. We decided not to do that at our last meeting, to not terminate, because we thought we were moving down a road that we could all get to and agree up... moving down a road that we could all get to and agree upon. And, and, Mr. Brenner Nitz, I completely agree with you that, that we do need to put the people first. And I think the challenge that, everyone keeps looking at the city of Reno saying, you need to put the, the people first. If you had put the people first from the start, you would have had these issues worked out prior to deconsolidation. You know, you go down this road of deconsolidation, knowing you've got areas within the county that you cannot take care of, and at the end of the day, that's what makes these agreements so important to the county, not to the city of Reno. It makes them important to the county. You don't, we're not here pounding the table saying, we've got to get this done, we've got to get this done. It's the county saying, we've got to get this done, because you went down a road blindly, not knowing how you were going to take care of your people. And you're right, you guys admitted, mentioned it earlier, you collect the tax from all of the residents within the Fire Protection District, they pay you for that service, and you can't provide it. And, and that's where the issue is, to look at the city and say, you've got to put the people first. We are putting the people first. We've got all our stations manned, we can serve every person within the city of Reno. We've got it covered. But I agree, and that's the conversation we had at our last meeting, was, okay, let's put all this aside and figure out how we get down to the point we need to be at, to where everyone's taken care of. And then obviously, I mean, you guys decided to put a question on the ballot to, to ask about automatic aid, and went down a different road, but, I mean, I think we, we're close. I really do think we're close.
Any more questions or, questions or comments? Okay?
Yeah, and, and I, I have to just speak for myself. I believe that we went, I went down the road for, and it took us to the position that we're in, because it came to the point where, due to decreasing revenues, the, the fire districts could no longer, Truckee Meadows could no longer continue under the agreement that was set up before, and it was apparent to me as one commissioner, that within one to two years, the district would be bankrupt because of the negative delta in revenues versus expenses. So, you know, that, that was, I guess, the basis. But I would have to say that, in addition to that, that it was an unfortunate thing that we had to do, but we had to do it because of, if we went bankrupt, then we wouldn't be providing any services to anybody. And I think that it's my assumption that when the districts did deconsolidate, that we would treat each other the same way that we treat every other entity in this region, via a standardized mutual aid agreement and a standardized automatic aid agreement, and that there would be no change. It wasn't until within a month of the deconsolidation that, in fact, there was notice given to us of termination of both of those agreements, and we didn't have really much time to work. So, what I'm working on now, and that's just in the past, what I'm working on now, let's start getting it back together. We can do it here today, and just move forward and check it out in six months if you want to do it. So I'm just suggesting, we put all this stuff in the background, we can't change the fact that we're separate. Let's move forward instead of looking back, and I think we can do that with the city of Reno agreeing that we're going to do this on a trial basis, and then they have, they can terminate at any time they want.
Councilman Azzie.
Yeah, if everyone just agrees with me, we can get this done today. You know, that, that's not a hard statement to make, if everyone just agrees with me, you know? So after a year and a half, let's put the people first. After we put the money first, now we should put the people first. That really sort of sticks with me. I know it was in the past, but it's still something that you did, and I, and I even told you that a year ago. And you said, yeah, that's what we're going to want Reno to do, the right thing, after we cut our services to the bone, raise the taxes by 20%, which you did in the last month, which you could have done in December and told us that, and we could have, we were only $1.2 million away from solving this whole problem, and you made that up in your tax hike that you made, a 20% tax hike. If you would have made that a proposal in December, this would have been, we would have been a unified district right now. So, and then you say that we've been dealing with this petty stuff for two years. Maybe we have, but if you recall, this is the very first meeting you've agreed to meet with us. The very first time we've sat down at a table with you to talk to you, because you've refused to meet with us. We have not had a public meeting in 14 months about fire services with the city of Reno and the county Fire Board. Show me the minutes. We have not had a meeting. We've asked and asked and asked, and this is the first one. So we haven't been going back and forth, you've been playing this out through the media. I don't mind going to a six-month time and try true-ups, except we did that with the last agreement, and you're still fighting us over the true-ups last time. We sent you our true-ups in March, and you fight it, fight it, fight it. So what makes me think that it's going to be different later on? I've got a chart here that after three weeks is wrong. You can't even keep track of it in three weeks. So why would I, why would I trust the true-ups in three, in six months, and when you have a chief that says he wants broad discretion? Here's the same person who has manufactured this chart that we've sewn today is wrong. He's made accusations about the Fire Department in public, which is absolutely a lie. He could have said it on the July 1st, he could have gone through and said, here's what happened at the, at the stations, but he doesn't, he waits for three weeks and then goes to the press about it, not talking to us. You guys hired a person, Kurt Lattipow, to oversee all that stuff. So if there's something wrong with what happens, I would put it on Mr. Lattipow. Either he was incompetent or Mr. Moore is a liar. Those are the only two possibilities that could be happening here. With that being said, I don't mind going forward with this on a six-month basis, but I want those other true-ups fixed. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve this agreement that the county commission approved today, that, that they pay the true-up bill that we sent them on May, on March 3rd of this year, and that we would approve this agreement.
And of course, do we, is there anybody else?
That's a motions on the table, Mr. Chair.
A motion, I have a second.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, for discussion?
Question?
Yeah, I think, the other thing I think that I find rather troubling is if the council, I believe, we had the meetings to work with county and agreeing with Councilman Dorch to go forward, and then we turn around, and it's a ballot question. A ballot question that we know darn well that the way it's worded is going to, to go a certain outcome. And I, I think that's really unfair, I think it's misleading. I would like to see that ballot question pulled. I'd like to get another opinion from the Secretary of State's office, somebody on that particular ballot question. I would like, if we're truly going to work together, we're truly going to work together, and I'd like to see the county commission pull that ballot question off, because I think it's misleading to the public and the voters.
But it's not binding, anyway.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but the problem is, is that I do think it sends a message that we're either going to work together, Commissioner Brenner Nitz, I agree with you, or we're not. And I think that if the city's going to move forward in good faith, I think the county should step up and do the same.
Mr. Gustin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Azzie, I could support your motion with the approving the changes and the, the period of time, the six months. The true-ups, again, I tried to read those before coming in today, and it seems to be that, mistaken or not, there happened to be two different opinions on that. Is there, and you sit on the Fire Board, is there a, some other, not litigation, that's not what I want to say, mediation, that a third party could look at this and say, okay, here's what the true, saying that the true-ups need to be paid right away puts me off a little bit. I, I know they need to be paid, I know we've gone back and forth on this, but what other third party can determine actually what position is correct or some middle ground between the two positions?
Is there forensic charged in this true-up that's coming from the county? Miss County Manager?
I ask Mr., I ask you that question.
What's, what's charged in there? We haven't seen that.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, the true-up done by Mary Walker was provided, I believe, yesterday to the city of Reno staff. I have a copy of that email that was sent yesterday. And again, it's done by the district and the district's financial advisor. To my knowledge, it does not include forensics, and there are several things that are in the true-ups presented by the city of Reno that were not in the original inter-local agreement. So we would certainly welcome some sort of mediation process, because there are things that are, are brand-new that have been introduced that were not part of the inter-local agreement. And again, it was prepared by Ms. Walker, we can certainly send it to you again.
And Mr. Gustin, I would agree with that, and maybe I would modify it a little bit, but let's, us have the upper hand then, and they could pay us and then go to mediation. And if the mediator's different, we'd pay them back, because we're always on the uphill side of the seesaw with these people. It's always, well, we'll have to pay you, and if we feel like it, and if we want to do this, then we'll pay you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brenner Nitz, but I'm going to ask our attorney the last motion before the, before allow the Board of County Commissioners to engage in this discussion. I need to know if this motion fits within the agenda item number five. Has it been properly agendized for a discussion about true-ups and forensics and all this other kind of stuff that's kind of being thrown in here? Could you please opine on that before the Board of County Commissioners engages in the discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd be happy to take a shot at it. My experience with public bodies is that sometimes motions evolve, and, and so we're not quite sure exactly what the city of Reno's action's going to be right now, but it does cause me some concern that if the condition to the effectiveness of the agreement is the payment of disputed amounts of money, then I don't know if we have a mutual aid agreement in effect, other than the one that was approved by the Fire Board prior to July 1st. And the city council can take its advice from, from its attorneys on that question, but as for the, the county or the, or the Fire Board, it would, it would make me worry about the effectiveness of, of that agreement. As for whether that's within the scope of the agenda, I think it is. Item five contemplates approval of an agreement, and Councilman Azzie's motion that's on the table yet to be voted on contains a condition to the approval of the agreement, and I think that's within the contemplation of, of the approval of, of agreements.
So let me be clear about that, the item number five is, which is what we are on, provides for the amendments to the inter-local, or, yeah, to the mutually inter-local agreements. Talks about the amendments, correct?
It does.
Is that sufficiently, is that sufficient to include true-ups and all those kinds of things? I didn't get that from your-
Well, let me be more clear. If Councilman Azzie's motion had been to amend the amended, amended, amended agreement, to amend it again and add a condition that the true-ups be paid, then that would be within the contemplation of, of item number five, which includes amendments to the, to the, to the, to the mutual aid agreement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brenner Nitz?
You know, as, as was mentioned, I, I think the, the difficulty I have is that we have a disputed amount, and a, a proposal or a motion contingent on that payment basically puts us in a, in an awkward position. What, what, what I think makes sense is, the, this group, as a joint body, has never talked about true-ups, I mean, in recent history. And what we have is a dispute that, that each one of our elected bodies hears the position from staff, and not being an expert, we, you guys, the city council hears it from their people, we hear it from our people. I would like, I would suggest that we have it, you know, in, in August as an agenda item and talk about it, look at the agreement that's currently, or that just went out of effect that would incur these costs, and just say, let this body see if we can solve that problem by looking at it and with our staff's recommendations and, and come to, if we can't, then mediation might be a good solution, but, but first, let's give us a shot. We've never talked about it. And I think that it would, it would make sense to, to, I, I think it would make sense to alter the motion, take that part out with the understanding that we talk about it as a body at our next meeting. And then you can do whatever you want after that.
That would make sense, but that's not legal. The agreement is still in effect, even after July 1st, because until the true-ups are done, and the agreement states that the Joint Fire Advisory Board will do this, you guys haven't wanted to meet in that board either. So, I have, I have no proof that you guys would even meet. We've had, we've called meetings, and you guys don't show up. So you can say, let's have a meeting in August, and you don't show up. So why don't we do it the other way? You pay us the money, then we'll meet, and if we all agree that we owe you some back, we'll pay it back.
I've, I've never, in my life, been advised by council, when there's a disputed amount, to pay it and then, then work backwards and expect to get it back. I think that, that, that it's, we can, we can talk about it, we can, we can work it out, and in fact, if we need to, to, these bodies in panel, the, the, the joint panel, Joint Fire Board, we can affect a modification to that assignment if we choose. I think the point is, that's an obstacle that we don't need to have. Let's talk about it here.
Mr. President?
If I could, Councilman, maybe the solution is that that's a requirement for our agreement, that we have to have that meeting in August to discuss the true-ups. That way, that would be contingent on our motion. I still want to see something on the ballot question, though, personally, as well.
And before y'all go any further, I, I think we ought to just cancel it, go off of what we're doing with them right now. We didn't cancel it, it's still in effect, what we had. Give us time to go back and really study these amendments they've made today and make sure we agree to it. But I, I'm just, I have no confidence in the county coming up with some numbers that we can play with or do, because they came up with numbers when we had an agreement, we, not an agreement, but we were working on something to go to a mutual aid agreement. And then all of a sudden, they changed the numbers again, and it was Mary Walker that changed the numbers, and she changed the different things. So I, I have no confidence in Mary Walker doing this, and I just think that they either pay the true-ups or let's get out of it. If we've got some things in there we didn't, then tell us what they are missing, and I'll bend, we'll go from, I mean, Ms. Simon, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the problem with approving the agreement we have today. I think, I think our staff has told us they like the language in this agreement more than they like the language in the one that we're currently working under.
Is that right, Chief?
So, so, and we still have the 30-day provision that we can, that we can send a letter and, and get out of it. So, I mean, if we're, if we're closer with what you're looking for, Chief, in this agreement, I don't have a problem doing that, and we can address these other issues still.
For the record, Mike Hernandez, I would just stick with the current existing agreement as it's written. It's done, it's, we, there's nothing to vote on, we've got it, and we can work from there. That's my answer.
Mr. Counsel, what do you want to do?
Mr. President, you want to draw your motion and stay with, make a motion to stay with the, what we're doing right now, or?
I want to draw my motion.
Okay. Mr. Dorch, will you give me a motion, or Mr. Gustin, or Ms. President?
You don't need a-
You don't need a motion, stay what we're doing. Yep.
So items five-
Again, though, I thought that we were going off the new language today, though. It's different than the current.
Chief says you want to change it.
What, and if the people in Hidden Valley and Collin Ranch aren't happy, they can annex into the city of Reno, and we can give them fire protection, even though they've already had their taxes raised?
I'm looking for legal. I believe that the, the current contract, current mutual aid agreement that we have right now is, is sufficient to get us through the six-month period, and we can reevaluate it, and there's nothing to adopt, there's no modifications to make. We're there, we're working into it as we speak.
But then what are we getting accomplished today? We finally all meet as a board. I mean, that's the only issue I have with that, Mr. Mayor. We finally meet as a board. I think we're going to meet this way, we might as well accomplish something today, I think have some give and take. I think the true-ups are an issue. Why don't we set a meeting? Why can't that be contingent on the motion for approval, that we have a meeting next month, each side presents, and maybe we can work it out that way? I think leaving these things on the table and just kicking it down the road again is not going to be productive in the long run.
Okay. Mr. Gustin?
And, Mr. Mayor, I would support if Councilwoman Sforza is making a motion about, we will approve the amended agreement, but contingent on that to have a true-up meeting in August. I would-
Sounds good to me. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I guess Councilman-
Got a public comment? Good. Call them up. Call them up.
So, I want to make sure, so the motion would be that we go ahead and move forward with this agreement today, and it gets terminated if we don't have a joint meeting with this, the two collective jurisdictions in August to settle the true-up issue.
Or in fact, we give consideration of sending the 30-day notice letter, maybe it doesn't get canceled, but send in the 30-day notice letter, if we do not have that true-up meeting in August. She made the motion, I second.
All right. Now, we have some public comment cards before we...
Public comment?
Huh?
Public comment?
Public comment.
Daryl?
Go ahead.
Daryl Cleveland?
For the record, Daryl Cleveland, Fire Chief, North Line County Fire Protection District. I'm one of your partners, both to Reno and the Truckee Meadows, and a mutual aid partner in northern Nevada. First of all, before I talk about mutual aid, I would like to thank the City of Reno, the City of Reno Fire Department, for the recent donation of a couple of brush fire engines to my fire district. They're in a good home, they'll get lots of use, and they will continue to serve the northern Nevada area, whether it's the City of Reno, Truckee Meadows, or the North Line County Fire District. Thank you very much for that. One of the arguments that I'm not hearing in this mutual aid issue, and it's an important one, is the risk that you put your company and command-level officers in without an agreement. I have this situation to my east with Churchill County, because we do not have a written agreement, which means that I do not have any legal authority to respond into their jurisdiction, nor do I have any indemnity from my agency or my people if something happens on a response in that jurisdiction. Therefore, it puts me, as the leader of my agency, in a real predicament that I have to make decisions, life and death. Do we respond, or don't we? Without a formalized agreement between your jurisdictions and your fire agencies, regardless of your prejudices in this situation, you place those individuals, your company and chief officers, in great legal peril by the decisions that they will be forced to make as a result of your actions or inactions. And when it comes their day in court, it won't be the electeds that sit on the stand, it will be your company and chief officers that made those decisions. So I would encourage you to consider that. The people who are providing your public safety are asking you to consider that. It puts them at great risk, not to mention the risk it puts your constituents in. Thank you.
Chief, you understand we have a mutual aid agreement in place, don't you?
I absolutely understand. I also understand the economy of scale, Mr. Azzie, and I can tell you that running a two-station, four-man fire department 24/7, with 2,500 calls a year, with automatic aid into the Truckee Meadows region that was formerly under Reno, I've given a lot more than I've gotten, until we came to a mutual benefit with the engine donation. That greatly helped my district. And in this economy that we have, when we look at economies of scale in response for mutual aid, we have to be creative in finding the mutual benefit to our organizations. The dollars aren't there. That's a difficult situation for all of us. So how do we come to an agreement in terms that create a mutual benefit for our organizations, again, regardless of boundaries and prejudices?
I'm just stating that your original comment was acting like we didn't have a mutual aid agreement.
No, I'm fully aware.
So I just wanted you to be aware that we have one. So those issues that you brought up aren't in existence right now.
I'm fully aware. And by the way, my previous agreement that was with Truckee Meadows via the Reno Fire Department was for 24 hours. Thank you.
Peggy Lear Bowen?
I guess I don't want to appear confused, but after listening this entire time to all the presentations, I appreciate Ms. Sforza wanting to come away from this meeting to have some benefits. You've spent your time, energy, and effort here today, you've heard everything that has to be said, old wounds have been open, salt has been poured in, we've tried to close them, and we've tried to get on with what's good for this community. And what is my hope and prayer, but where my level of confusion is, I almost thought I heard what we're operating under now is a mutual aid agreement and to the exclusion of automatic aid. And if that's an error, please feel free to correct me. If it's not an error, when it comes down to it, and you have that auto accident out instead, and you have that fire station with the medic there who can respond within a matter of minutes compared to 15- or 20-minute response from somewhere else, I think you need to put the people first instead of the dollar signs. And I am very concerned that if we are functioning now to the exclusion of automatic aid, shame on us. If we're functioning now, not caring about the individual incidences, if it's not a major 22-house structure fire, whatever, shame on us. We need to get down to the reality of, it takes a village, and I don't care what your political beliefs are, you and I both know it takes a good elementary school to have a decent middle school and a great high school. It takes a village to get onto the college and get onto our community. And I think that you all are capable of doing, you're able to do that, and you're also protecting your constituents, and I can understand that. I'm, I've been an elected official, but I need us to get back to the reality of what is, and lives are at stake, property can be replaced, equipment can be replaced, and we need to work together the way you used to. I think I understood, and I'm going to do a translation, Ms. Sforza, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Sounds to me like you didn't follow that age-old advice, that it wasn't broken, and then you try to fix, and it doesn't seem to be working, but you're going to give it six more months and make sure that it's a wash on who pays for what? Well, who pays for the lost life? Who pays for somebody who has a heart attack that becomes totally inadequate and has to spend their life on healthcare, total healthcare, because the aid didn't get there in time? And as far as your locations, you have fire stations exactly where they need to be for our population right now. You're working on one more, maybe. I didn't quite catch it. Take what you have and best utilize it, and don't always look at the dollar sign. Thank you.
I have no others.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Just getting back to the motion, and I have had the opportunity to talk to a couple commissioners. I do want to see if we can get, understand your legal counsel, and not trying to be derogatory in any way, but I think if there's a way that we can do something about the ballot question, I'd like to see if there's appetite for the commissioners on that.
Well, unfortunately, before we can allow the commissioners, we're not agendized for that, Commissioner Sforza, so...
Well, I think this is part of the whole mutual aid discussion.
I know, but we're not agendized to talk about the ballot question. We're, you're talking about mutual aid and not the ballot question. So before I can allow commissioners to engage, which would probably possibly be a fraction of the open meeting law, I'm going to have to defer to our council to guide us in this.
But it's a question on mutual aid on the ballot.
It is not. It's a question about auto aid. So go ahead.
Should we wait until, see what the voters say?
Well...
Please, please let the counselor give us some advice here.
Mr. Chairman, just so everyone has the same information, the advice I gave to the county commission, excuse me, the Fire Board this morning during its meeting, was that under, actually, it was the county commission, it was a county commission item before we got to the Fire Board agenda. Under the state law, there's a deadline for placing items on the ballot, and that same deadline exists for withdrawing items from the ballot. And the statutory language is very clear, it's not ambiguous, it's not subject to different interpretations, and once in a while, I get lucky and find an easy one. That was an easy one. The answer isn't what everybody wanted, but in terms of the process to include advisory questions on the ballot, it's clear to me that there's, that there's no means available to withdraw it. So that was the advice I gave, and as far as how that relates to the mutual aid agreements that are on the table now, in my view, it would be asking the county commission to deliver an impossible task to condition the approval of mutual aid agreement on the withdrawal of the ballot question. So if that's a condition of approval, then I don't think you're going to get an enforceable agreement at the end.
Yeah, and let me correct, I'm not trying to make that as part of the motion. I wanted to get the commissioner's feelings on that. I mean, that's been discussed, so I wanted to see if there was anything that could be done about that. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Well, once again, counsel, are we in, is the Board of Fire Commissioners, we have sufficient attitude in this agenda item to discuss this? It was not properly noticed in this manner, but can you give us some guidance?
You're not agendized to talk about ballot questions as their own subject, but it's theoretically possible that the City Council could propose an amendment to the mutual aid agreement that is on the agenda, that the mutual aid agreement is contingent upon some other act of the county, that is within the contemplation of the open meeting law agenda.
I'm just trying to get the feeling, Mr. Chair, from the commissioner. If we're going to do a kumbaya today, I want to hear from the commissioners about the ballot question.
John Cadlec, the Reno City Attorney. Mr. Liparelli and I are going to part company here. If you look at NRS 293-481, that's the regular ballot question. He's right, I agree with him 100%. You can't withdraw it, you have to withdraw it by the date, which would have been, what is it, last Monday, I believe it was July 16th. When you get to 293-482, which is the advisory question, I have a different reading of that. There is nothing within there that tells you how you withdraw it. So I don't know what the answer to that question is. I'm not willing to make that leap that you can't withdraw that question, because unfortunately, that statute does not, at least my reading of it, and Mr. Boni and I both read it together, it does not specifically state that you can or cannot. Maybe that's a question that could be addressed by the Secretary of State. Is it possible at this date to withdraw that advisory question? Because the statute, in my opinion, does not give you a methodology, one way or the other. 293-481 absolutely does. 293-482 does not, and so that's where he and I are going to part company as far as interpretation is concerned.
So maybe the commission could ask the Secretary of State's office. I mean, for, I mean, they control elections.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
As a commissioner that voted in favor of the ballot question, I've had, my thoughts have come back to, I supported that motion for different reasons than, than the folks here would have known. I thought it was something that was educational to the public. I looked at it as it was asking for emergency responders, not just fire. I supported that motion, and when I was told today at our board meeting that through Mr. Liparelli that we had no options, I'd like to ask Mr. Liparelli if there is a way that I could ask for reconsideration at some point today in some meeting today? Reconsideration, or to ask for the Attorney General's or, you know, Secretary of State or whoever it would be, what avenue would we go? And I'm not trying to override you, I respect what you're saying, but there are other opinions, Mr. Liparelli.
Well, if we're going to get another opinion, it isn't going to happen today, and you have an agenda to act on a mutual aid agreement, I return to what I said before. The question is, is the motion that was made for approval of a mutual aid agreement contain a condition that the county or the Fire Board accomplished some act, the failure of which causes the agreement to terminate? And we're not going to have an answer to that if we're going to ask the Secretary of State, and he's going to get some legal advice from the Attorney General. It's not going to happen anytime soon. And so I, I think it's an interesting political question, and we can, Commissioner Weber, I'll certainly follow up on any requests you make for opinions, but as it relates to what's on the table right now, I don't think you're going to get your answer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Liparelli, and I would just ask that the makers of the motion would give us an opportunity. We do have a 6 o'clock meeting tonight, and I would, at that point in time, ask Mr. Liparelli how I could ask for reconsideration and ask for the Secretary of State's opinion.
So let me, let me help you out, Commissioner Weber, with Mr. Liparelli, if he'll keep me on track here. We do have item, under the Board of County Commissioners, we do have item 21, which no action was taken on item 21, would ask for reconsideration of approval of the subject ballot question. There was no action taken on that. Anybody in the affirmative majority may ask for that. If there was a motion to reconsider, 21, at the 6 o'clock hour, the chair at this time is opining, he may be interested in reopening that item. Am I off-base, Mr. Liparelli? This is, this is only on our rules now, this has nothing to do with the direct ballot question, only on our rules.
You, the county, Board of County Commissioners is properly agendized to reconsider its earlier vote and to potentially take a motion on a vote to rescind the resolution approving the ballot question. No action was taken, so it's within the purview of the board to return to those items at the evening session and, and take different action. But as I said, I've already advised that I don't believe that adopting a resolution to rescind the ballot question is legal, and doing so is within your prerogative, but against my advice.
Thank you very much, Ms. Liparelli. Commissioner Bernitz?
I have no problem with exploring the ability of a commission to rescind that action at the state level, a higher, you know, Attorney General's office, or where the most appropriate place might be. I don't think that's necessarily a problem. I think that, that that would then, that opinion would then result in an item that would come forward to the commission for reconsideration. I think we ought to wait for that opinion before we jump off and get, you know, get, take an action that basically is invalidated by, by an Attorney General's opinion, as it sits. Our council has advised us that we can't take it off. I have no problem with that discussion. If, in fact, we do have the ability to do it, let's talk about it. But I think that's, that's, that's down the road. And I, I think that the, the whole thing about the ballot question is that the, so far, it served its purpose, because we haven't been talking about automatic aid, and we should. And I've also requested today a ballot, or a agenda item at our next meeting, a joint meeting, for a discussion related to automatic aid, because we need to be talking about it. We can't bury this topic. So I would just suggest that, that if we don't talk about it and begin talking about it now, then we're going to leave it to another council and another Board of County Commissioners or Fire Board. And, and we can do that, but I think we can also begin the topic deliberation on the topic now, if we choose to. It's up to us to decide whether we want to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, go ahead. I'm sorry, Councilman.
Mr. Dort?
Yeah, let's, let's be clear. The reason we haven't talked about automatic aid is because you guys haven't wanted to talk about automatic aid. We've asked, we've been asking for a year, since you guys first sent us the letter that you were going to terminate this agreement, we have been asking for a joint meeting to talk about mutual aid, automatic aid, how we're going to work moving forward, and it's taken us until now to have this meeting. I mean, so the idea that we haven't talked about automatic aid, we have. We've asked for meetings about automatic aid. You guys didn't want to sit down with us.
Okay, I, I think that, Mr. Mayor, what I, I guess what I'd ask the commission to do, I think sample ballots go out August 16th for print. I can't force you guys to ask for an AG's opinion, you can do that as a body. I'm not going to make it contingent on the motion, but I would ask the county commissioners in an act of good faith to move forward tonight, that you guys do that on your agenda this evening and get a second opinion on the matter. I'll go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and restate the motion that we go ahead and approve this agreement and contingent on the, the meeting to be held in August regarding the true-ups.
True-ups?
And we can have automatic aid, Commissioner Bernitz, if you want that on there as well.
You know, that ballot question really is nothing but an advisory ballot question... You know, that ballot question really is nothing but an advisory ballot question, and nobody has to live with it, whatever it is. It's a joke. And so let's go from there, and let's work and see what we can do.
Once again, I will second the motion.
All right. City of Reno has a motion. Let's go.
Before you move on that action, I'm sure we'll have a similar one with the county. I need to ask the chief a question on the on the true-ups. It is 30 days, we're talking about 30 days, Councilwoman? Yeah.
Yes, if we could do, I think, let's see, 30 days?
Well, let me, I got to ask.
Or, I'm sorry, late August, Mr. Chairman.
We're having this discussion about the true-ups. I know that Mary Walker, our financial advisor, has been working on that. Can she be available and produce the necessary reports for the Board of Fire Commissioners prior to that meeting, going into those true-ups in 30 days?
Yes.
Can you feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. With your actions.
All right. Have a motion. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Here a similar motion from the Board of County, Board of Fire Commissioners.
We already approved it.
No, we didn't approve the true-up meeting, so we got to, that's why we, excuse me.
We want to hear what you guys think.
Excuse me. This is the reason why, commissioners, this is the reason why Mr. Liparelli put item 5 on, it's the exact duplicate, in anticipation of some kind of issue like this arising. This is a modification of that amendment to include a meeting on the true-ups. We need to take action on that, correct, Mr. Liparelli? Because that's a part of the action.
Mr. Chairman, I think you can look at it a couple of different ways. And I did confer briefly with Tracy Chase from the City Attorney's Office, and I know Mr. Cadlec has conferred with her as well. The two ways are, you can consider the agreement that was approved this morning and just approved by the city council as the agreement, as it is, without any changes. And then you can consider the duration of that agreement to be the end of August. If there's no, if there's no joint meeting that, to the satisfaction of everybody before then, then the agreement automatically terminates. Or you could take action to approve an agreement that differs from what you did this morning in the respect that it is modified by the condition that was placed on that approval by the city council's action. And that would be action on an amended mutual aid agreement by the Fire Board. And then you have, both bodies have resolutions to adopt as your next items on the agenda to formally approve those agreements.
So the only substantial difference is the agreement for the meeting in August, that from what we agreed to this morning?
Right. And not to be difficult, but we're at the 24th of July right now. I don't know what the respective calendars of all the busy elected folks are, and I don't know exactly when it's going to be possible to have a meeting in August. And if we somehow fail to do that, then we've taken mutual aid off the table. So it, there's a lot hanging on having that meeting in August.
Well, I think that's the point, isn't it? Councilwoman Srazza?
Yeah, I think that's the point. I know we've said this before, but maybe we could all look on our calendars. I don't know, they said that was a violation before. I don't see how it is. We do it with every other board. But maybe we should all look today and set the date.
Well, as I understand this, the amendment that was just approved is contingent upon that meeting occurring. And if it doesn't occur in August.
We still would have to send a 30-day notice of termination.
Right. So we got 60 days, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I think in the spirit of.
If we don't have a meeting in August, we'll send a 30-day notice of termination.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
So I think in spirit of which everybody's been talking about, of cooperation here, I think that the chair will entertain a motion that is styled off of the city of Reno's with the inclusion of the meeting occurring in August. And if no commissioner wants to make that motion, I make that motion. Commissioner Brenner.
So move.
Motion and second. Any further discussion hearing in all's favor? Blaine, what do you? Yes, Blaine.
Blaine Carlish, Deputy District Attorney. There's some confusion, and we just wanted us to clarify what the city action was on which agreement so that the board action also was clear on which agreement. The existing agreement or the amended one that's being offered from this morning?
To clarify, it's the amended agreement. I think the whole council, is that right?
The amended agreement.
That you approved today.
That we approved today. Is that correct, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Yeah. With the language that was approved today. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, the motion? Those opposed, motion passes. And that there for makes the remaining item six and six moot at this point?
Okay. This is for six, for the city of Reno, this is resolutions, it's 6A, it's resolution number 7751. It's the city of Reno Resolution Adopting and Approving an Amended Cooperative Agreement for Mutual Aid Between the City of Reno Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and Sierra Fire Protection District contingent upon their occurring between the Board of Fire Commissioners of, for the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, the Sierra Fire Protection District, and the Reno City Council, a meeting to be held at a date to be designated in August. And should that not occur, then the city would give the 30-day notice, and it would end the mutual agreement, give me the mutual aid agreement.
Is that referred, John? Adopt? Is it adopt?
It's adopt, a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Excuse me. Mr. Liparelli, the city of Reno seems to have lost their quorum.
We got four.
We got four.
One, two, three, four. We have four. We have.
We do have, excuse me, I thought that you lost Mr. Hayazi, and that was your quorum.
He was five.
I guess you get no respect, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Move to adopt.
All right. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, maybe just, I hate to muck this up more, but for next month's meeting, I think a couple people had mentioned mediation. I don't know who's going to schedule the meeting for August, but maybe it's time that we do get a third party that both parties agree to, and then we settle that it's binding, whatever that decision is, on those true-ups. Just a suggestion for potentially next month, having the possibility to have it agendized that way.
Okay. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
So Mr. Liparelli, what are we doing with 6B and C?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the way this agreement is set up, it's contemplated that it would be approved by resolution. My recommendation to you would be to adopt the same resolution that the city council did, if you're inclined to approve this in this way, as stated by the city attorney.
Second. This also includes mediation. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor? Aye. I'm sorry. Commissioner, I said, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Do you need to do?
Chairman?
Yes.
Sierra Fire Protection District also has a resolution to adopt to complete the.
Same format?
Agenda.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Brenner, that's seconded by Commissioner Weber. Discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? And show that Commissioner Jung joined us but was not with us on 6B.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right, is that it? That conclude our business? Do we have public comment?
Yes, you do.
Please call the public comment.
On 6B? Ayane? You didn't ask for public comment on 6B?
I'll do it on seven.
Let them talk.
Let them talk on seven.
On seven? I think it's on mine, too.
Yeah, seven on public comment.
Thank you, Mr. George. Cliff Low, followed by.
Eight's a German. Eight's a German.
Kathy Brandhorst.
Should be, should be exactly the same.
Thank you. Kathy Brandhorst, followed by Bob Ackerman.
Line up, Kathy.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I just wanted to let you know, there has been several, I mean, all the fires have been set on fire. They're still setting them on fire because of one thing. Harvey Oswald is still alive. Kennedy's assassination. They're little kids, 11 years old. He wanted to speak today, but somebody walked him outside the door and beat him. I just wanted to let you know, this is no way of treating children. They are good kids. They have been through enough. Their brother is only six years old, going on seven. His name is Scott. He is the chief of fire, fire chief. And how do you treat him? You set him on fire. You throw him out in the woods and hope he'll burn to a black crisp. This is not a way to treat your fire chief. He was hired. He needs to be respected. You grownups need to stop stealing his payroll checks. That's what you need to do. He deserves to sleep inside with his mother and father. He does not deserve to be sleeping outside in the cold. He does not deserve to have nothing to eat or nothing to drink because you say so. He is a human being, just like the rest of us. He needs to be treated like a human being. His sister is only nine years old, and I am still talking about the Kennedy family. She's nine years old. She has snakes implanted inside her body. She was screaming 24 hours, every day and every night. She's in a lot of pain. We called the police several times to have those snakes removed out of her body. But you people walk outside the door and say, no, don't remove those snakes at all because she needs to suffer. She has to suffer because she saw you all carrying a machine gun.
Your time has expired, Kathy. Thank you. Madam Corr.
Sorry. I didn't, did you hear me? Bob Ackerman, followed by William Stewart.
For the record, Bob Ackerman, Delena Forest, citizen of the county. I've sat here for over two hours just listening and shaking my head. Coming out of the private sector, I personally believe this is a non-issue, very easy to solve. And if you got the, come down from the top, solve the situation, or look for a new job. By the grace of God, some of these faces won't be here come November. But I'll tell you right now, common sense is on its deathbed, and it needs some resuscitation. And to me, simple, simple thing. We're talking about monies here owed somebody. If there's a big issue and you're looking for the true-up, put the money in an escrow account, and then you can duke it out, or however you want to do it. But you don't need a mass of people like this sitting around for two hours. Get to a small working group. That's the way things get done in the private sector. Thank you.
William Stewart.
Good afternoon, early evening. William T. Stewart, for the record. Elected officials, thank you for your time and your service. Couple things, just as Bob just said, common sense. We need to work together for the whole benefit of the community, not pitting city versus county, not hitting people in the press, sitting at the table, looking each other in the eye, and finding a solution to this problem. It's that simple. We have the chiefs here, we have a lot of people here, we have surveys, we have studies, we have opinion polls, we have flyers, we have, you name it. I mean, we've done it. So it's not that difficult, you know? Eric Herzig, the political scientist, was quoted in the paper, it's not rocket science, right? So public safety, that's what government's for. There's no reason why you can't work together. Sit at the table, talk to each other, figure it out. Lives are depending on it. Thank you for your time. God bless America.
I have no others, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any final closing comments? Oh, I hesitate to say that. Commissioner Weber.
I just wanted to share with the city of Reno, my fellow council members and commissioners, that I hope in the future that, I know we said a lot of things today, and I would ask that we all take a step back and look at the comments or think about the comments that were made today. In many cases, I believe that some of them were very disrespectful, and I think we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard and have conversations where we are respectful to each other's entity. And I appreciate the city council. I appreciate all the things that you have done in working with the city, in, with working with Washoe County. And I hope that you understand that there's decisions that are made that sometimes you might not like, but hopefully we can talk to one another and get those things taken care of. So I just want to say thank you to all of you.
I think we made a big step today addressing the public comment and the speakers. I think we're moving forward in the right direction. I think we, I mean, we haven't met. I think that's been part of the problem, and I think it was very productive today. And I think next month's meeting will be productive as well.
Hi, is there a motion from the Board of Fire Commissioners? To adjourn? We've got a motion without objection. We're adjourned as a Board of Fire Commissioners. Mr. Mayor.
City of Reno, my favorite motion. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. This meeting's over.